I'm not against children.
Rachel Smith, here. Rick Tolls, here. Luisa Estep, here. Jody Downs, here. Martha France, here. Linselane. The absence? You vote on this, is that an excuse, unexcused absence, then?
We should, I guess.
Where are we voting on? I couldn't hear what was being said.
That she's unexcused.
She didn't notify the office? No?
Okay. Didn't you release them? That's what you're asking.
Okay, yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Martha France?
Yes.
Jody Downs?
Yes.
Our minutes for a regular meeting held on March 25th, 2024?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our regularly scheduled meeting held on March 25th, 2024.
I'll second. Is there any questions?
I guess on the adjournment, I did say yes to adjourn. I'm not listening, but other than that. I made the motion, so.
There's more than questions?
Okay, thank you.
I'll be accepted as presented.
Mayor, I will make a motion to accept our bills dated March 22nd, 2024 through April 4th, 2024 in the amount of $32,621.16. I'll second.
Are there any questions on the bills?
The Toledo Chamber? Do we have to be members of that too?
We're members of that to have a savings on our medical insurance.
Vote?
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Martha France?
Yes.
Jody Downs?
Yes.
Luisa Estep?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes for pending the bills. Move on to the sheriff deputy and, um, do you have any questions for him?
Questions and issues going on at all? Nothing's brought to you out of the country at all?
I don't think there's any, I mean, we're pretty smooth.
Yeah, we had issues. Slow season, so it's going into, well, no, we close issues, so.
Not very smooth for the people over here in traffic.
Thank you for having me. Thank you.
That's not a report that you have for us.
No, no, if you guys want it, I think it's the one that you know, isn't the same one that you know you guys were?
We get that.
Yeah, you can.
Okay, thank you.
Your thanks. See you.
Bye-bye. You see. I will say a few things here, but I'm just gonna comment on the eclipse, how spectacular it was and the feelings to everybody to help control everything through the town and put things on, the chamber and the council and stuff. I think that went really smoothly and it was a nice thing, but it's a months in a lifetime thing. I don't know if anybody's noticed, but all that I made out in the features.
Oh, new features.
They look nice. It's pretty neat to see. It looks pretty good, all put together.
They also have a top for the fence.
Yeah.
It's orange now instead of yellow.
I had a question on the trees around the tennis courts, as though, I think the pomegranates.
Yes.
Drop all over. They wondered if those trees could be trimmed way down so they wouldn't get so bad, but. A mess with them and people have been up there and it's good weather trying to play on the tennis courts and do something out there, but, um, they need some attention to them.
From the trees or the drop?
I'm sorry?
They drop down from the tree branches.
They're about as big as a golf ball.
Yeah, and they're not easy to get off that golf, often times where it gets stuck in that plastic.
That's right.
Yeah, and it's the fence everywhere there, so he actually asked if we could cut the trees down so we could get them out of there. It's not a good tree that's there for that matter, but they have to take better care of getting them off the court because they're just a mess and then they get the weeds caught in there as well.
Said only a certain year that that does that, isn't it?
Yeah. It's part of the side.
Don't the city workers like blow them off or something?
We did last year and I fell again.
Well, every year they'll fall, right?
Right.
Or they fell after you.
We did fall after you blew them off the first time again.
I just wanted to let you know too that they did start digging in the new developer, putting the underground utilities in, um, they're making headway on that. Well, I haven't heard when they're gonna start making foundations or anything like that, but, um, you had mentioned that last meeting about.
Yeah, they got a bunch of holes, uh, they cut an M2X cable this morning. Which was mine, so.
Hopefully it'll get all taken care of and be back to normal in a few days. I did talk to the man for the tree sculpture, um, he's definitely trying to find a different place or a different way to locate that up in the park up there. Hash them over with him again, but, um, he's got some, um, ideas about it. Down that I saw earlier and I'm glad that they are down and thank the person that took them down. Now we're supposed to be up like five days after the end of the election, is that what you said, Rick? Five days and they're on now, so. Information that I have right now.
Chad?
Yeah, I don't know a whole lot either. Um, I talked to Tim with K and K about planting the grass seed and he asked me, uh, would we do any sidewalks in town if you guys had thought about that, like we have been doing? Just so, you know, we already can get a bid out or something for it. And he also wants to know about the downtown trees because he, we are gonna do it, you know, he kind of wants to know, so he can kind of write us in if we're gonna use him.
Sure.
And he is gonna plant grass, he's just waiting for the terrain to pass and get a free day or two. Um, and then a resident wants to cut down some cantabas trees, it's on Third Street, they are in the right of way. She just doesn't like them. The one of them looks like it's got a split in, I was gonna have Mr. Rowe look at them, I guess he's trimmed them back before. From what it sounds like, I'll have to call her, she said she, she would pay for them to be cut down, but since they are in the right of way, they're kind of our trees, so. Something you guys want to talk about?
How many trees are there?
There's two.
Two? And one has a split?
Yeah, yeah, and I don't know, that's probably the one that, we did take it down, that's the one that the bill should probably pay for since it is. But, you know, she's the one to pay for the other one, I don't know if you guys would let her do it or not. Um, and then there's a mitigation plan, uh, the Wood County Hazard Mitigation Plan was approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Uh, those council needs to approve the plan to be eligible to apply for grants and programs in the future, uh, because of emergency because of June fourth deadline. And then, as John said as well, they just suffered kind of a subdivision. Uh, that's all I have.
Um, Chad, I wanted to find out if you've heard anything from, um, persons or possibly about when they could take those other trees down on Main Street?
I don't, so we're gonna go ahead and just do that?
Yeah.
Let me start cutting them down?
I'll call them tomorrow.
All right, I just didn't know what we were doing for just cutting, because you guys hadn't said what we're gonna do.
I think we said you were gonna, we were gonna partner with that cam type.
Right, but, um, the thing is, when we do it, I don't know if we're gonna backfill the stone because we're gonna put all concrete or if I'm gonna put dirt back in those holes because I kind of don't know which way we're leaning towards it.
Yeah, we haven't decided.
That's kind of why I haven't done that, but I mean, I can just put dirt in there, it's just gonna cost more because I have to go get it and fill every hole up with dirt, we're gonna plant trees again. That's kind of why I've held off till I kind of figured out what you guys, which way you were leaning.
We had a lot of mulch out there, weren't we?
We did a lot of mulch, but I mean, if we do fill it with something they can't use, we're gonna have to suck it back out again, so.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, because it's kind of easy to dig out by hand, no hole being so small. So, I mean, I can do it and still the dirt is, I just didn't know which way we were going, so I hadn't, that's why I haven't done anything with it yet.
Okay. Um, the flags that are up are still the winter flags?
Yeah.
Are we gonna?
Yeah, I can change them whenever.
Okay.
All right, I can do that.
I don't want it to snow anymore.
I don't want it to.
I don't want the snow. And I took my snow shovel up the front porch, so.
And Chad, I believe we discussed, um, with K and K that we would get, um, an estimate for Area Three, which is across the street. So if we had extra money, that's, we would have that quote.
How much for a little? To Chad, um. By the, um, Blue Bell Island, um, gates coming? And I don't know if there's a bucket that can be purchased for. They need to get those out.
Get them out, but I can't reach once, when it gets real low, the bucket doesn't all be down there.
Yeah.
I just can't reach the bottom, but I, I can look into it.
Yeah, that would be, because there's one laying across there, I saw it, um, on Saturday morning, I suppose, um, it was stretched clear across the, uh, it was. And it was blocking everything up coming through there, right? I know you couldn't get a hold of the regular.
I can usually get most of that stuff up the regular bucket, actually, as long as the water's high enough, I can get it to go over.
Okay.
But I can look into seeing how much something like that would cost.
Okay, yeah, this was long enough that it wouldn't go through the gate unless you pulled one end around and it'd cost you. Hang on, just the thought that maybe make it easier to get them out and safer too.
Right.
Okay.
Um, in regards to the trees on Third Street that are in the right of way, um, you said you're gonna have Rowe look at them?
Yeah.
Okay, and then you'll bring back a recommendation from what he said?
Yeah, and I'll try to depress them.
Yeah, because if they're healthy trees, kind of one has to support, you know?
Yeah, it looks like it from the ground and all that, but she just doesn't like it because I see those hills one positive.
Because they're so pretty in the spring, in June, the flowers are so pretty.
Um, I gave you all a copy of the March bankrupt, everything is reconciled. And then the resolution we have on the agenda tonight, we have a third reading. You've got my agenda. So that can have a, a motion for passage this evening, and then we have a first reading of the mitigation plan adoption. This does need to be in the county's hands by June fourth, so it doesn't leave enough time to have three readings or to prove, so. There's a need, um, to suspend the readings and declare an emergency for the resolution and then a motion for passage. You are willing to do so tonight? And that's all I have.
Thank you. Reading of communications, um, the Finance, Ways and Art Committee reports.
Uh, the Finance Committee met on Saturday, April 6th to review the ARPA application that were received. And, um, everyone from the council was here, the mayor, as well as Peggy C. And we all reviewed the packets that were submitted, uh, we received seven of them. And I have a couple motions to make, um, did anybody have any additional questions on those packets before? Can we go further? Okay, well, we had allocated, um, $67,500 of the ARPA money, um, the American Rescue Plan money, um, for the nonprofits in town. At a maximum of $7,500 each, so I would like to make a motion that we grant $7,500 to, um, the Atsigo Food Pantry. The Grand Rapids Art Council. The Grand Rapids Calvary Church. The Grand Rapids Swimming Pool. And the Grand Rapids Historical Society out of the $67,500 that was allocated.
I'll second.
Okay.
Can I ask?
Maybe. Your motion is second for passage. For a maximum of $7,500 for?
To give them each the $7,500.
Yes.
Out of the $67,500 that council previously approved.
Yes, and, um, that was the, can you rename those again?
Yes, the Atsigo Food Pantry.
Okay.
The Grand Rapids Art Council. The Grand Rapids Calvary Church. The Grand Rapids Swimming Pool. And the Grand Rapids Historical Society.
Why? You can't.
That's, uh.
You have to sign it, can't you? You have to sign it.
Martha France?
Yes.
Jody Downs?
Yes.
Luisa Estep?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Rick Tolls?
Yes. Motion passes.
Okay, so that puts $30,000 back into our pool, um, of monies, so that would give us then, um, we were at $18,000, so that gives us, that takes us back to $48,564.92 Of the original $105,589.92. So of the $48,564.92 that's in the American Rescue Plan Act, I would like to make a motion To give $7,500 to the Grand Rapids Little League and the Chamber of Commerce.
I'll second.
To approve giving the $7,500 to the Grand Rapids Little League and also to the Chamber of Commerce. Have vote?
Jody Downs?
Yes.
Luisa Estep?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Martha France?
Yes.
And I'd like to hand these packets over to you.
Motion passes.
So with that, um, we now have left in the ARPA money, $33,564.92. But we have, um, an outstanding project yet for the town hall header and the painting, so, you know, that, those may come in above or below what we already previously approved, so. Council again needs to, um, we need to come up with ways to disperse that money, um, and allocate it before the end of this year. It doesn't have to be spent by the end of this year, but it has to be allocated.
And is December 31st the deadline or is it in October?
December 31st is the deadline to allocate the money.
Okay.
It has to be spent by the end of '25.
The end of '25 it has to be spent, and that's the same for the organizations, just we just approved that money. And, um, I drafted a follow-up form, um, I sent it to Crystal and I'm gonna send her some more information tomorrow. And, um, she's gonna send that follow-up form with the checks and then, um, then I'll do a follow-up, you know, like in July or something if we don't have. You know, July, August, if we don't have information from them as to how they have spent it or will be spending it.
Okay.
So that Crystal has that reporting.
I did receive, um, a quote from the Town Hall Committee from Chuck Thomas for painting. And he believed, I, he said he was gonna have a second one, he's getting a second quote on Friday.
Okay. So. We have allocated so far, so far, $4,500, so if we need to amend that, there's still monies available.
Well, we are making progress on that, so. Okay.
Move on to reading of ordinances and resolutions. We have the first reading, Resolution 2024 dash zero three, mitigation plan adoption resolution.
I have a motion to suspend the readings of, um, Resolution 2024 Day Three, the mitigation plan adoption resolution.
We have a motion and a second to suspend rules for the first reading of Resolution 2024 dash zero three, mitigation plan adoption resolution.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Martha France?
Yes.
Jody Downs?
Yes.
I move for passage, um, Resolution 2024 Day Three, the mitigation plan adoption resolution.
I'll second.
Question for passage of Resolution 2024 dash zero three, mitigation plan adoption resolution. Have a vote.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Martha France?
Yes.
Jody Downs?
Yes.
Luisa Estep?
Yes.
Resolution 2024 dash zero three, pass. Reading of Resolution 2024 dash zero two, resolution authorizing the fiscal officer to receive cable franchise fees into the sidewalk fund. It's a third reading.
Make a motion for passage of Resolution 20, 2024 dash zero two, the resolution authorizing the fiscal officer to receive cable franchise fees into the sidewalk fund. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for passage of Resolution 2024 dash zero two.
France?
Yes.
Jody Downs?
Yes.
Luisa Estep?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Resolution 2024 dash zero two, passes.
I have something, um, Rick and I met again this week with Bob Clark. And by the end of this week, he will be ordering the 14 veteran banners for the Hometown Hero Project. So it's moving along, he's also got the brackets ordered. And then he's going to be making a presentation at the Memorial Day Program Parade Program.
Okay.
And either shortly before that or after that, we will have something on the village website so that people will know How to nominate and purchase a banner for their hometown hero. And it was, um, discussed amongst us that the, we had originally thought that the packets would be turned into Crystal at the village office. And Bob said they might as well just send them to the Legion since they're writing the checks out to the Legion, so all of that's gonna go to the Legion. He's setting up a, a new bank account, um, so it'll be totally separate, it's gonna be the Hometown Hero Bank account, so it's all gonna go in in there and out from there. Um, he has two, um, different pieces of equipment to put up the banners. And he said that, um, he probably would be doing that once they got it on a Monday morning. And he's gonna let us know prior to, and we will certainly communicate that to both you and the mayor when we know that. So, um, that's moving along and it's, it's looking good, yeah, absolutely.
That's great.
So, yeah.
Any business?
There you go. There you go.
Lucy Hillberry had asked about, um, putting a bench along the river in memory of her dad at Klein. She said she'd asked prior but was told no, so I, I said I would bring it, you know, tonight.
Is there, is there room for another bench up on the tow pad?
Uh, there's already a concrete pad where the bench was that got broke.
Okay.
I mean, you could maybe put one there instead of burying it.
Sure, so the cement's already poured?
Yeah.
I think she was looking to do it by the log cabin, that was part of the conversation, is up there because her dad had, right? Yeah.
Yeah, they want it done by that?
By the information booth?
What kind of bench? Respondents, it's both are done.
Uh, she did not.
Maybe she can work out, yeah, tell you with the village units.
So we just have to call you.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
The resident of Grand Rapids calling this afternoon regarding the, um, the travel trailer that's parked on the corner of Wapataheta and Second Street. They said it's been there since last fall, it's not plated, it's got broken windows, and they have asked multiple times to have it removed. So they would like the builders to get involved and have that moved. It's unlicensed, in which I believe we have an ordinance that states you can't have unlicensed vehicles.
Yeah.
So. But people don't like it.
Well, I, yeah, I've had complaints too.
Yeah.
So there's a letter that'll be sent then, is that what we're?
Yeah, we can send a letter, I'm sure it gets in there.
You know.
Is that, that anyone heard of?
No.
Like maybe a food truck or something?
Is still violating the ordinance right now?
Right.
That's true.
You know, the lessons, so, we've done it in the past.
John, I do have, um, it was brought to my attention about maybe, um, having a sidewalk from the front to the bridge here in the park.
Yes.
Some people. I'll stick. I'm gonna make sure that. And. Pisanaro said she has those, um, curb stops, she was wondering if they could be moved. Right there, and she said they would have to jump that, but, uh, she said people, you know, trip on them and. She said she talked to somebody, I don't know who she did, but.
I read through the conversation.
Yeah, she talked to me about it and I talked to John about it, who thinks it's probably not gonna be able to move it.
I don't think so either because I, I, when the car pulls up there, then the wheels are gonna hit the sidewalk itself.
Right.
And then the front of the car is gonna be halfway across the sidewalk.
Right.
So, that's where they're, to keep them back, you know, back away from that so they can lock down the sidewalk.
And I think that sidewalk might be a little higher too, so if they do run to the sidewalk.
Yeah, low car, run into it.
You're getting quotes for the sidewalk for whatever.
Area three?
Yeah, area three, why don't we get a quote for that? The only thing we at least need to have one to the handicap accessible swing, I mean, if you're taking your child to the handicap swing.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, but from the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then from there, if you want to cross the bridge.
Right.
You have something to watch for, cross the bridge, couldn't get across the bridge, you're in storms.
Right.
Yeah. Much more subtle with the.
Yeah, right, right, yeah. Right, 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 yeah.
Would you? I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for June, uh, April 10th, 2024 meeting.
Martha Franks?
Yes.
Julie Downs-Pott?
Yes.
Louise Easta?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Rick Tolles?
Yes.
I didn't get to sign in, but I was asked to make you guys aware that there was an accident um, on, right in front of the purple door, a woman had. Had tripped over the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna show you.
Yeah.
I'll tell him to find somebody to get that star on the tree.
Um, no, not at the, I was actually just talking to Peggy about it, so.
Okay, alright.
Yep, she, oh, no, I'm sorry, Paula, and she suggested maybe we would talk to the fire department with their ladder, maybe. With their ladder lift, they could get it down.
They don't have a ladder lift?
How did it get up there?
Uh, he even came down and put it up.
Can you have he even come down and take it down?
They won't do it.
Why's that?
I, I don't know. I don't know, I think they had to, I mean, the time it took them to drive down here and everything, they just don't have the ability right now, so.